Is it seven and a log?
It's seven and a log.
Oh, yeah, here we go.
Okay, so...
Let me do the audio here, Ellen.
What?
All right, I think our audio was on here as well.
Yep.
Yep, it is. Okay, and we've started.
Okay, so, we're gonna call to order the Select Board meeting for July 15th, 2024, 7:00 PM. And we don't have too full of an agenda.
It's very reasonable.
Reasonable. So, we're gonna start with announcements. Do I order to open the meeting? Do we both open the meeting? No. All right, we'll start with announcements.
No, you just call it to order.
So, I call the meeting to order. I've just done that. Announcements. I thought I had more of an announcement for the live streaming that's coming to Millis. But I do have some good news. Apparently, even though we're trying to get live streaming for a lot more than we're going to have in the short run, in the short run, we're going to be able to livestream these Select Board meetings. And for all of you who don't know what that means, because I was one that had no idea what that means, live streaming, what it means is people that do not have Millis cable and people, obviously, that live out of town, which there are many employees that live out of town that want to watch our meetings when they go home, they will be able to watch live Select Board meetings and soon thereafter Finance Committee meetings, right? And we need to talk to the school about their meetings and maybe other divisions. And then eventually, my goal, our goal, which is one of our goals, is to be able to livestream town meeting and, God willing, on the school side, graduations. Wouldn't it be terrific if people could watch their grandchildren and whoever else graduate? So, but for now, the first one's gonna be the Select Board meeting, which is coming soon. And I'm not gonna say when, but it's coming soon.
Excellent. We're good.
I think that's exciting, because that was a goal from two years ago. Now, we're gonna get to the open session items, and the very first one is appointment of a cultural council member. Am I reading something, Karen, or are you?
Hold on. You can read it.
I can read it.
I can just...
Okay, so...
It's just someone that came in, and you just did all your reappointments, and this person came in days after. And we're always happy for volunteers, so it's Jamie Staritis.
Okay, so am I gonna read this whole blurb?
No.
No.
No. You can just recommend her appointment, or you can just appoint her, not recommend her appointment.
Okay, so apparently, we have a cultural council.
We do.
No, it's cultural council, did you...
Now, I don't wanna be that person, but does anybody wanna talk about the cultural council that we have?
Sure, I can.
All right.
Excellent.
Yes, so there is a cultural council, and what they do is they award grants out to different entities that apply. So, it could be Niagara House gets a grant if they've applied. It could be Millis Theater Group, things like that.
The arts.
The arts, yep. And recently, they put on, in June, maybe it was June, they put on a cultural council event called Color in the Community, and they had community members give their artwork, lend their artwork for display. They had some music. They had Nirvana there serving tea. They had people making tie-dyed shirts, all sorts of stuff. So, they seem to do some good work, and it's been interesting to see what they're coming out with, so...
So, you don't happen to be on the cultural council, do you?
I don't, no.
So, do we know how many members there are? Do we know?
I don't know how many members.
I think there's, this isn't one of those, it has to be five, they're not voting on things, so it's kind of like whoever wants to join. I think there's no maximum, is there?
Okay, well, we have an interested...
We have one more.
Apparently, so, we have an interested person, Jamie Staritis.
I believe it's Staritis, yes.
Staritis, from, lives in Millis, that is a dance instructor who has applied to be on the cultural council. So, do we have a motion?
We do. I move to appoint Jamie Staritis as a member of the cultural council for a term of three years.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Jamie, congratulations.
Madam Chair, I was just going to say, this is for the arts, and a lot of people that are on the council are either artists, musicians, dance instructors, photographers, but certainly anybody can join who has an interest. So, it's kind of cool. Sorry, so it's kind of a cool committee.
Well, it sounds very cool.
Cool is the right term, but yeah.
If anything sounds cool, the cultural council sounds cool. Anything for the arts, right?
Yes, for the arts. It is, it's very nice, it's really nice.
So, I'm trying to find my, here we go. So, number two, we want to have review slash approval of e-permitting with Full Circle Technologies, and we're gonna hear from Jim Donovan, our full-time IT person. Jim?
Yes, in our efforts to modernize and streamline the permitting...
Move the...
Sorry. In our efforts to modernize and streamline the permitting process in Millis, we conducted a thorough evaluation of multiple e-permitting solutions, with significant input from fire, building, and health departments, as well as the Town Administrator's Office. We selected Full Circle Technologies. This decision was based on several key factors, including cost effectiveness, ease of use for both town staff and residents, and the comprehensive features that Full Circle Technology offers to meet our specific needs. We believe this solution will greatly enhance our operational efficiency and improve the overall permitting experience for our community. We request you approve to proceed with Full Circle Technologies.
Okay, well, this is exciting. Do you wanna explain to anybody what this is gonna give us?
So, basically, what it does is it allows contractors and residents to apply for permits fully online, pay for it online, go through the approval process there, be able to check their progress, get responses back from different departments if there's a holdup for something, request for more information, something like that, so they can see all that information online and get instant feedback at any time of day or night without needing to be concerned of when departments are open or when the building is open.
And this is ultimately, I know that this is a three-year contract with, what's the name of the company?
I believe it's one year. I don't have the contract in front of me, but I believe it's only...
Well, this says three years.
It is three?
Yeah.
It's a three...
Permitized.
You called it something else.
Full Circle Technologies is the parent company of Permitized, so Permitized is basically the permitting software, the brand, so to speak, of the permitting. So, yeah, so three-year contract then. We have, we'll do about six months to get up and running and go live, and that's currently going to be, I believe it's four departments, building, health, fire, and Town Administrator's Office, if everything goes swimmingly, which I assume it will. We will then also start to review other departments and be able to bring those into the process as well.
Okay, just as an aside, Permitized is probably the most used, certainly in Norfolk County, because I know that Medway uses it, and I do a lot in Medway. It's a very slick process. It's intuitive, it's not clunky, and everything about it, I think people are gonna love it.
I agree.
Okay, good.
So, Madam Chair, for the purpose of the board's approval tonight, I think we originally listed Permitized, but the actual contract is with the parent company, Full Circle Technologies, so that's actually the company that you'll be signing the contract with.
Yep, I get that. So, do we have a motion, Erin?
Yes, we do.
You do?
I move that the board approves a three-year contract with Full Circle Technologies for a not-to-exceed amount of $72,560 for year one of the contract, and for a not-to-exceed amount of $21,730 for year two and three of the contract, and to authorize the Town Administrator to sign for the town on the board's behalf.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jim, one quick question. We have a grant.
We have a grant for $52,000 of that.
Yeah, why don't you talk about that for a second?
So, we received the...
We'll lead with that.
We received the grant about two years ago, so we've been going through the process, especially me being part-time initially, so the process was rather long, going through the multiple different companies to look at. This was the one that fell in line the most with everything we were looking for. So, the grant is $52,000 from the state, and that does all the startup fees. So, basically, the $21,000 per year after that, and in that first year's contract, is the ongoing fees that we will be paying once we're live. The initial, I believe technically it's 48, but we have 52 in case there's overtime or things like that that come up in it, that we'll pay for that initial startup of this process.
Okay.
All right, good.
Okay, that's good, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great news, great for the town. Okay, the next agenda item we have here is...
Two of my favorites.
Two of your favorites?
I'm an easy man.
Oh, my God.
Or is it her favorite?
Everybody's favorite. We're gonna talk about paving contract and a tree trimming contract with Mr. McKay.
Thank you. So, this is like Christmas in July for the people that live on these following streets.
It is.
As you remember, a couple of, about a month ago, I asked permission to put out to bid the, I think, did Karen give you the...
Yes.
Yeah.
This page, yeah?
Yeah, here we go.
Walnut Street?
Wait a minute.
I'm gonna take my glasses off. Walnut Street from Orchard, Street to the Town Line, Village Street...
No, Jim, I didn't give them this page, I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't have that one, yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that. Just wanted to take a look. It's just the list of where we are actually paving.
Okay.
That's what we posted online, too. We'll do this tomorrow, because you gotta prove it first. So, let me go to the first page that you do have, and then we can talk about the particulars after. So, we put out the bid, we had three bidders, and the low bid was Daniel's Asphalt Services, Inc., from Fall River, in the amount of $1,200, $1,200, $1,200,752.50. Not part of the bid was police details for $22,000 and line painting for $5,000. So, I would ask that you approve the projects listed as stated for $1,200, $1,227,752.50. And what that work is gonna take care of is as follows.
Jim, you changed the number that's from our motion. What's the number?
1,220...
One million.
One million.
227.
227.
Yep, 75250.
Okay, I see what, sorry.
What do we do?
It's because I wrote, for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,200,752.50, that's for the paving itself.
That's the paving. Yep.
Not including, I guess I should say, not including paving, police details, and line painting, or somehow, yeah, how do you wanna vote that?
I mean, the $5,000...
They need to vote the contract piece first, correct?
Yes, the main contract.
Which is what?
Which is what she has in here.
$1,200,752.
792.
Don't include the last, don't include where I say, police details and line paving. That's only for the paving. Gotcha.
Okay.
So, I'm looking at it, and it makes more sense.
All right, so let me explain. What that's gonna take care of is, so the base bid is, what the base bid was exactly was Walnut Street, Village Street, the two sections, and the Hammond Lane, that funky intersection that goes from Main Street, and we're gonna go up to Farm Street and to Acorn Street, all around that property. The funding for that will come, will be first spent from the $613,466 that, from different town meetings appropriations that the town has given us, Chapter 90 funding of $370,204. And the gift fund, if you remember, the developer who, we ran the sewer up, he gave us $20,000 to help assist us with paving on Seven, I think it was Seven, Acorn Street, and we have...
Jeffrey?
Yes, yes. And we have remaining balance of $7,324 from different years. So, that definitely gives us enough money of $1,010, $1,010,994.72 to pay for the base bid, and that will be taken care of for the town projects. Alternate one, if you remember, the Bob Weiss's committee, were you on that?
I was on that committee.
You were on that committee?
Yeah.
And the first two top priorities were Main Street, you know, the pedestrian detectable pads all along Route 109, we'll be changing them.
That's Economic Development Committee.
Economic, yes.
Okay.
And there was a grant that was usable for, I think it's called Safe Streets?
Yep.
Complete Streets.
Complete Streets.
It was a complete street grant, so it wasn't just road paving, but the detectable warning pads were a major item on their list of things they're interested in seeing, and sidewalks was one they were very interested in.
And sidewalks. So, that's not coming out of, that's coming out of that project, and those are grants, so that's a grant-funded process, which is good. I mean, that's a lot of work being done. And that still leaves, I think, $300,000, $400,000, you know, Mr. Weiss, when he comes back, he can update you on what's still left on that list that, and I think most of the other parts of those projects can be done by the DPW, intersections and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think the total grant was maybe $400,000 or $500,000.
Yep.
I can't remember the exact amount.
Yep.
So, we're using maybe half-ish right now, if it's $500,000, so.
And this was approved by the committee.
We had to come up with like five items that were on the list, and they far exceeded the money that we had, but...
So, pretty impressed with that. I mean, that's probably one of the largest ones that I've ever been part of, you know, spending all that. And a lot of it can, you know, those numbers are gonna come down, but this is the bid price. Now, there's stuff in the bid that, you know, we can do, and it'll come out of it. So, I'll let you...
Okay, I have a quick question.
Sure.
When are you gonna be paving Hammond Lane?
Well, me and you are gonna have to talk about that tomorrow, and the developer, because that's, there's been a lot of discussion, I've talked to the Town Administrator about that.
I did speak with Mr. McKay earlier today about a timeframe concern there with their project, and that they have to act on that very soon.
Okay.
And they've been well-advised, and it seems like there's a very slow process going on, not on our end.
I understand.
On the developer's end.
Okay, we can talk.
Yes.
Okay.
If they don't, there's a five-year moratorium.
Yeah, no kidding.
They're gonna have to come back to the board.
So...
Yes.
I don't know what they're dragging their feet for.
Yep.
Yeah, they should move quickly.
Okay.
Yep.
So, are we good for motion?
Yeah, just one quick question, because I'm sure it's gonna get asked. The repaving of the sidewalk on Plain Street instead of putting in a new sidewalk, that's because of the cost of the takings for new sidewalks and other roads and things like that.
And there was a design that was done for this section under previous contracts that were paid by town meeting.
Yeah.
We did a design for the extension of the sidewalk from, on the gas station side of Main Street to the entrance to the high school, and there would have been land taking there, and it would have, that, it just wasn't enough money.
That's what I, yeah, because this is, I mean, this is important to do.
Yep.
But people have asked, why aren't we doing the other side? Why are we repaving this side?
Yep.
And the reason is cost.
Yep, and we don't wanna, I mean, you know, stormwater management, you don't want sidewalks on both sides.
Yeah, and by doing the land taking, it would have exhausted the grant.
Yes.
I mean, all of it would have been used up, and then some, yeah.
Okay. All right, so are we ready now for a motion?
Yeah, so I'm gonna split this into two motions. So, the first motion is, I move that the board approve the contract with Daniel's Asphalt Services Incorporated for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,200,752.50, which includes paving for fiscal year '25.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I move that the board approve the spending of $27,000.
Police and striping, you have a number?
We have to do the police, at least the police detail, because the Town Administrator can approve the five.
Expenditure of $22,000 for police details in relation to the FY '25 paving contract.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. What was that number, 22 what?
22,000.
And what about the line painting?
They don't need that, yeah. I just wanted to put it in and say where the money...
We can go out and paint the lines.
Yeah, yeah, we're actually doing that now.
Cultural council.
All you do is get a two-by-four, you lay it down, you spray in between, it's not that hard.
Yep, we're doing that. I mean, I'd like to give an update on Route 109.
It's hard.
I wish I had a date for Route 109 sections to be paved, but we're still waiting to hear back from the state. I mean, that could be one of their last things that they do. I mean, they're still promising us that they're gonna do it, and if they don't do it, then with funds left over, we may have to, you know, there's one real bad section from Milliston Road to like almost Adams Street that, if they don't do it this year, we're gonna have to address it.
We're gonna go on the fact that they're gonna do it.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, we're gonna stay after them.
I just don't want people to think that we forgot about it, and we're not, it's put on the back.
But it's a state project, so it's done on their schedule, so, but they have informed us that they have every intention of doing it this paving season.
Yep.
Madam Chair, I just wanted, since we're talking about roads, I just wanted to say thank you to the, our summer help that has been hired by the DPW. They have been doing an unbelievable job. I saw them myself out there last week in the heat, doing weed whacking. I know people are noticing, and we know our DPW is short-staffed.
Yep.
These kids are coming in and working their tails off in the heat and really helping improve the sidewalk, so I just wanted to say a big thank you. It makes a big difference, I think, for the public to see that, so...
Agreed.
Thank you.
They're full good workers.
And they're good workers, so thank you to them and their parents.
Both the 15 and two 16s.
I know.
Yep.
They are, they're, let's hope they're enthusiasm lasts the summer.
In these heat waves.
Till tomorrow afternoon. So, the second contract that I would ask, allow the Town Administrator to sign, you approved this contract last year, but why we come back each year, like you just saw how he did it, you know, we don't know how much is actually gonna be in the tree budget. I mean, some years, there's $50,000 from town meeting giving it, so that's why we have to do it once a year. So, we would ask that you not to stumpy tree service in a not-to-exceed amount of $25,000.
Okay.
I move that the board approve extending the contract with Stumpy's Tree Service dated 10/28/22 for a period of two years at a not-to-exceed amount of $25,000 per year.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Great.
Okay, anything else?
So, we took over the, you remember the police sign board?
Yep.
The second one that was broken, so our mechanic is working on that, so we should be able to have that up and running, so we'll be able to hopefully post all these in different areas, you know, when the paving starts.
Okay.
And we'll definitely put it on the website, I'll put a map, I'll get a map ready, so the public can see where it's gonna be paved, and Karen can help us with that. Great, thank you.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, the next item on the agenda are the goals. Are we ready to...
We've got a copy of them.
Right?
Yeah, and we can start putting check marks next to some of them right now.
All right, so Craig, you were on this, do you wanna do it again?
Yeah, I'll run through it real quick.
Okay.
And what I did was I took the information that was provided at the last meeting and tried to fit it to one page and eliminate duplicate items.
Yep.
And I abbreviated a lot, but I consolidated, and I think I got everything on, though.
I think you did.
So, if we just wanna run through it and look at it, produce a balanced, produce an FY '26 balanced budget that provides level service funding for all departments, restores the positions cut from the school budget in FY '25, and add needed positions for public safety in DPW that were not funded in FY '25.
Yep.
That seem to catch the gist of our budget goal?
Yeah, that's an ongoing...
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Improve efficiency and reduce costs by consolidating services to other towns, municipal departments, and move contracted service in-house areas to include library regionalization, senior service regionalization, and shared services across other town departments, DPW in schools, shared field maintenance and snow plowing, add engineering services and conservation agent to in-house positions, which should result in cost savings overall.
Yes.
And I wouldn't wanna do any of those things if it costs us more.
Nope.
So, the idea is to save money by doing them.
Yeah.
Continue to evaluate and correct the direct, indirect cost of the enterprise funds. Produce a fully loaded budget showing all sources and uses of grants, that's for internal discussion, but I think it's helpful to see all the sources. Lobby the state to correct the educational funding imbalance, which potentially, there might have been some headway made on that, very small, but like, I think there's $80,000 extra in one of the budget versions that might come our way.
Okay.
But, I mean, still, you know?
It's $80,000.
It's nothing, but it's $80,000.
It's $80,000.
It's sad that $80,000's not significant, but they hurt us at least, but...
Not loud enough.
Not loud enough, thank you. Enterprise funds meet quarter with the enterprise committee to discuss status of projects, and encourage the committee to determine whether Millis will run out of sewer relative to the available land for development. And then on sewer, dependent upon enterprise committee's findings, investigate the option to expand sewer capacity through purchase of capacity from neighboring towns or requiring onsite treatment plans for large projects.
Yep, perfect.
Water, secure all available grants, legal settlements, et cetera, for PFAS, just try to keep the cost down. Improve town infrastructure, continue funding the road and sidewalk programs, we can all put a check mark there. Investigate use of town-owned buildings and properties such as Lansing-Millis Building, Ellis School Building, and the Braun-Cassidy properties. Continue to work towards affordable housing in Millis through the MBTA zoning and state senior and family housing programs. Find a suitable piece of town-owned land, Cassidy-Braun, to gift to Millis Housing for housing for seniors and families. Improve software and online resources for town departments and committees. We can put a check mark there, too, based on tonight's meeting. We have two of them at tonight's meeting. Economic development, Reagan, recognizing that Millis will not support large commercial retail or industrial growth over the near term, and that housing is a primary revenue producer for the town, Millis should focus on smart housing strategies such as the MOD, which is the 3A, the MBTA housing, and extending the Millis ME-COD, I think I got that right, which is the, what we have over at the dry cleaners and that area right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's an overlay district, we have residential on the top floor and commercial on the first floor. Extend that further down the road, potentially, and in Hope would be the area that that would make sense for. Try to make that a little more attractive. And the reason behind that is, we just keep talking about bringing more commercial into town to offset the tax burden to the residents. I think that's an important goal, but I don't think it's anything that people should count[1611.41] I think that's an important goal, but I don't think it's anything that people should count on. You know, there's not a reason, we haven't been successful bringing large-scale commercial to town since 93, when I served on the first economic development committee, and there's been eight iterations since, I think, that we've had. And we just don't, we're not going, and people keep talking that we should become a large commercial place, but I don't see that happening. I think we're a bedroom community, and that's gonna be our source of growth. Any questions about that one?
No.
Because that's one I feel fairly passionate about, yeah.
Well, I, this economic development committee, I mean, we've talked about this. Millis has a what? A three-mile, maybe?
Yeah.
Stretch of commercial property on 109. That's it.
Yeah.
Compared to Medfield on the one side that's got, and then you've got Medway that's got both. We just don't have it.
Yeah.
So, you know, unless you're gonna kick one use out for another use, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
So you have, at some point, you have to see what you got and use that instead of this, geez, I hope someday somebody buys Ananhope and puts in.
Whole Foods. Or Brew Pub, or.
Right. I mean, that's great. I think you plan for what we have.
Right.
And if anything happens with that, how nice for us.
Yeah, I'd love to see it happen, but I don't think we should base our future economic growth on the theory that that's gonna happen.
Not who we are.
And the overlay district allows it to remain as it is at Ananhope, or it would allow it to be, again, commercial on the bottom, residential up above, and that's a model that may be more attractive to some.
Yup.
So anyway, I think zoning's a way to make that work. Town, expand town services, clean out large room and basement. I don't remember that one on my list.
That's me.
Yes.
That's all me.
Yeah.
We are gonna do that and tell you.
We were working on that today.
All right.
That was a promise we made to the senior center to try to make the space a little bit more useful, that's all.
I'm gonna put a checkmark next to that, too.
It's just, it's storage.
Storage.
It's a shame, because.
When you say large room, how big is it? Just out of curiosity.
It's, it's.
It's like the size of this room, right?
It's this size, yeah.
It's this size?
No, no.
Probably, probably three quarters, three quarters of size.
About up to the table.
It's the biggest room down there.
Okay, let's clean it up.
And files, and files, and files, and building materi, it's.
You're right, it probably goes to the end of the class.
I think they should get billiards tables and put them in that room.
Well, now you're going into the 26 goals.
You get the stuff out, I'll buy a billiard table for that room.
Well, we just got rid of a billiard table down there two years ago, so just so you're aware.
Okay, so increase services including billiards for seniors.
No one used it, so we got rid of that. Sorry about that.
So increase services for seniors, departmental collaboration partnership with other towns. Create causes for celebrations, citizens of the year, parades, pride event, fireworks. I wanna see the fireworks again. You can see them perfectly from my house, by the way, so.
They were good.
Yes, they were good.
Yeah, they were excellent, yeah.
Yup.
Improve external communications, so live streaming meetings.
Checking that off.
That's a checkmark.
Right there.
ClearGov up and running and current with the data. Continue website improvements.
See, that one I didn't understand.
We have this product called ClearGov.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I don't know, it's always been behind, like, a year or two behind. It's got the ability to see real-time data and just answer a ton of.
What do you mean, behind?
We're showing FY23 or '24 data, not FY20.
Oh, you mean, we haven't given them updated?
Yeah, I don't know what the.
It's, it's, we have to update the website, and we, we aren't doing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when, when anybody looks for Millis data on ClearGov, it's, it's, what is it?
It's old.
It's old.
1904?
No, no, it's, it's, it's 22, 23.
It's a little more recent, but not.
Post-pandemic, maybe?
It's, it's always been an issue, and I don't.
And not the influenza in 1918, but the current one, yeah.
Well, who?
Finance Department, and I, so I don't know if it's just, I don't know what the.
Yeah, I don't know, I think it's.
It's just very difficult to use, or why we can't seem to get there.
I don't know, it, it, we looked at it, and it was fairly intuitive to use, but there's a lot of data, so it just might take a long time. It's one of those things, it's like catching up on the minutes. I think you have to get data in.
I know this isn't in here, but this is a little segue, because I've spoken to you about this, Mike. I wanna tag on to this update thing. We need to update with the state our 40B level, what we've satisfied. This is crucial.
Yeah, I have talked with Bob Weiss.
Bob Weiss?
Bob Weiss about it, so.
Yeah, he's working on that.
Because we can have as many units, we could be 30% here and be saturated, but if the state doesn't have it, then we're, we're not gonna get credited for it.
Right.
So people who come are gonna be able to get it, because the state's not up to date.
No, I agree, it's important to maintain that.
And we are going to be, between all of us, we are going to be done very soon with that. We're going to be a 10.
With the 10%?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because rentals count, yeah.
But we need to update it with the state.
I'll try to squeeze that into four. Maybe we take out ClearGov if we can make that just an internal goal.
Good.
Trying to force it to one page, okay?
Okay, I like it, because the others are more important.
Yeah. And then continue website improvements. I actually find that the website is far better than it has been in years past. I can find everything I want on, I go to it. Some of that has been me learning how it's laid out.
Yup.
And, and learning how to write my searches in a way that yields the results, but I've been able to find just about everything.
No, it's, it's.
It's, it's better. We're still, I still think it's a work in progress.
No, it, it's only, well, they always will be.
It's still, it's always gonna be.
They always will be, but it's not a work of fiction in progress.
No, no.
It's got real things in it, it's got everything you need to find.
And of course, now that we've sort of gotten it really good, they're getting rid of this version, and so we have to update, I think, in December, but that's okay.
That's it, it's over.
But I'm like hoping that, that it's not gonna be a, too monumental of a task, that a lot of it will get brought over for us.
Okay, I see a checkmark on number four.
Implement online permitting.
Oh, right there.
All right. Do you prefer a checkmark or a strike-through, or a little box with a check in it?
I'm like an app, I'm like a backwards.
You're a backwards checkmark.
I know, I'm a backwards checkmark.
All right, and investigate a Saturday town meeting for the fall. I mean, people have asked for it. Let's talk about it, that's not saying we're gonna do it.
No.
Let's have a conversation.
I just wanna talk about it. I wanna know if other towns do it. I wanna know.
Some do. I wanna find out what was discussed. We can bring in people that served on the old committee to talk about it and see what we got.
All right.
And people with opinions.
What do, what does anybody think about these goals?
I think they look good.
I do, too. So Karen?
Yes?
You good with it? We're gonna get rid of the ClearGov one and get that 40B in.
Yup, I'll change that.
And a little formatting.
Yes, and you, so right, get rid of ClearGov, switch it out for the low-income housing. The ME-COD, I gotta look at the acronym. I feel like that feels funny to me, but I'll look it up.
It's Millis Economic.
Is it?
Center, maybe it's Millis Cent, it's M-C-E-O-D, Millis Center Economic.
I think it is M-C, I don't, I don't know. I'll check on that and update if it needs to, and then I think, the only other thing that I noticed is under 2B, you're saying enterprise committee, it really should be the enterprise funds advisory committee.
Yeah, that's right.
Because that's their real name, so I just, we should probably just update that piece.
And they're coming to our next meeting, correct?
So I'm told.
August 11th, yes.
You were told?
Yeah.
So I'm told.
We'll see.
So, yeah, I can update those, and then if you wanna vote, then say you approve that with the changes.
Do you want, do you have anything with that? Erin?
No, I'm good with it.
You wanna make the motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I move that the board approve the fiscal year 25 goals as presented and discussed.
Second.
Okay, all those in, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, the next item is the MBTA Communities Overlay District.
Yes, so.
The article, what do you got?
So Madam Chair, in your packet, in the board's packet, is a memo from Bob Weiss in regards to the MBTA Communities Bylaw Referral. So just making the board aware that the Planning Board's Acting Chair, Nicole Riley, asked that the.
She's on the next page.
Yeah. Asked that the proposed MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District zoning bylaw article be referred back to the Planning Board for a public hearing at one of their upcoming meetings. So this is part of the legal process, that the board does have to refer that item back to the Planning Board for their action. And then once they complete that process, it'll be, there'll be a request that the board place an article on the fall town meeting for action by the voters.
Okay. Now, you were on this.
I was.
So what do you got?
It's, I think it's a pretty good plan, actually.
Okay.
The original plan that came out of the planning, the state planning group, had us adding 3,000 houses, potentially 3,000 more homes to a community of 3,200, which doesn't make any sense. We have to be, we have to accommodate 750. Problem is, the state uses one set of software, and the people that help with consulting use a different, so the state typically has a lower number when they run it through theirs, so we wanna come in something a little north of 750, because when the state puts it through theirs, it'll probably fall.
But 3,000 was a little too north?
3,000 was too far north. We think 800 might be reasonably north. And this, again, the important thing is, this doesn't mean anything will be, will be built. It has to be allowed by right. So there are two areas we're putting an overlay district. This is the MOD overlay district. The two areas, and there's a map in here someplace that shows it, it's the GAF plant, and it is the Stony Brook properties up there. So that gives the owner the opportunity to change the configuration, increase the density on Stony Brook if they so choose, and it gives the GAF property a right to build higher-density houses there if they so choose. We picked both of these areas because, well, one's already in apartment and condos, so a density change isn't dramatic. And the other one is just empty lots, so nobody's house is being taken down. This isn't gonna be my lot that's, you know, a half acre is going to put four houses on it next door to Ellen's. So we've really, or six houses on it. So we've really been able to minimize, we think, any impact on any existing neighborhoods. It's not, you know, green space that's gonna be taken and torn down and plowed up and put in. It's, and we're required by law to do it. So the grants that we receive for sidewalks and the 400,000 grants, all of those may be affected if we don't do it. I don't know if those particular grants are.
Oh, you think?
Well, I mean, we've got those grants, but the next grant.
They're good examples of what.
Yeah, those are examples of money the state gives us, that if you don't comply. And the towns that haven't complied, Milton is not complying, and they're mostly disputing whether they're a mass transit community or an adjacent community. They don't dispute the fact they need to have something, but that's the difference between 3,000 and 750 homes, you know, is the, the service communities need to have far more houses than an adjacent community.
Right.
And we're classified as adjacent community, so that's why we have 750 as our number. So we think this is a good compromise plan. It's a very limited area. It, it's not going to have the success for housing that the proponents think so, and it's not gonna be the end of the world that the opponents think. It's a, I mean, the way I've heard described is a leadoff single. You know, it's not a home run, it's not gonna solve all of our problems. It's going to help, potentially, but it's not going to solve everything, and it's not going to be this disaster where we're tearing down neighborhoods to put in.
Right, so the important thing to know, people, anybody who's listening, is this does not mean this is ever going to happen.
Right.
All it means is that we're complying with a state mandate so that we will still be able to get grants if they ever give us any, but.
We get these grants, we just don't get the school grants.
Right, that's true.
Well, if the school gets grants, yeah.
But it doesn't mean it's ever, ever, ever going to happen. It is just a, an overlay district, not unlike other overlay districts. If somebody comes in and the seller's willing to sell and the buyer's willing to buy, then maybe it will happen, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean anything.
Yeah.
It does, it just doesn't. Anywho, so, do we have a motion?
I move that the board refer the proposed MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District zoning bylaw article to the Planning Board for a public hearing at an upcoming meeting.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay. Review of liaison positions.
All right, the MBTA 3A is going away.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna draw a line through it.
Yup.
That's true.
And I, and they still have you, Craig, on this.
Yes, he tried to give this up.
Yeah, Norfolk County, yeah, I mean, it's.
I know, so.
I'm gonna drop that one. I mean, we can, we, any of us can go if they want to. It's.
Good.
It's not very, I mean, we get such a small percentage of the vote, it's purely informational.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
So how often does this happen?
Occasionally.
And is it at night?
I don't know, but it is, if, if, they Zoom.
They Zoom for most of it.
You wanna watch one?
Okay.
They hate each other. Should I, can I say that on public TV?
There is some friction in the meetings.
There's some friction, and it's, 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 it's a.
Maybe I'll watch one.
It's lively.
Are we required?
I would recommend that we all should go to the annual meeting, because they hold it in a restaurant with drinks.
Oh, we should do that.
Yeah, and it's in Quincy, so I will go to the annual meeting, because it's just up the street from where I work.
As long as we post a meeting.
It's a lot of.
So are we required, Mike, by, to have a designee, a said designee, or no? Can they just say, we'll go when we want to?
I think by default, it's the, it's the chair, unless someone is officially designated.
I'll go to the live meeting in Quincy for you.
Okay. I can't bear it, honestly.
No, it was, I, I went to a couple of them, and it's tough.
It's tough.
It sounds like Erin might need a turn at this, don't you think?
It's tough to watch, just what, when I get the, do you get?
I get them, okay, yes, I got, I've gotten a few of them.
You get something?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you forward it to us when you get one?
Yeah.
And if I get one, I'll forward it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because you, I'm, I'm sure it's, well, it's live and Zoom.
But it's not, it's not really a committee that I would think that any of us are serving on, because we don't, it doesn't accomplish anything. Your, your vote is proportional to your population in Norfolk County, so it's Quincy, it's Needham. If those two vote the same direction, nobody else matters, you know?
Right, right, right. Yeah, very interesting.
We get to the kids' table and talk to the other little towns.
So right, so right now.
It's good analogy, yeah.
Right, so, and I counted the number of women there. I think there were two out of like.
Of course.
50 people, seriously, not.
No, seriously, I agree with you, yeah.
Seriously, it's that.
I'm sorry, do I look surprised?
It is literally the old boys' network. We broke halfway through it for cigars.
Oh, come on.
Cigars and branding.
Br, well.
No.
Scotch.
Would be funny, but it's, it's just seems a.
Sad but true.
It seems a little outdated.
Yeah.
So do, do we want to list you, though, Ellen, as the designee, just as a?
Leave, leave me as a designee.
Leave Craig, all right.
And I'll go to the live meeting, because at least then we can smile and shake hands and.
Yeah, leave Craig.
Yeah, I'll go to the live one.
I think they still have your name as a designee anyway.
Okay, so I'll, I'll stay on, but I do not intend to attend Zoom meetings.
He's the closest to the, the white male.
I was just gonna say, right, right there.
I almost fit in.
Almost. You almost fit in. All right, so we have Capital Planning Committee. Craig, you still interested?
Unless somebody else wants it, but I feel that I do well there.
Okay.
Cemetery Committee. Erin, you want that back?
Yup.
Erin wants it back.
Okay.
CPC, Erin's gonna, you should keep. You've only been to a couple of meetings, because I went by mistake.
Yup.
Remember?
You seem to struggle with that, but yes, I do remember well.
I don't even know what this one is. Economic Development, oh.
That's, that's the one that I go to, that if anybody else would like, I'll be glad to swap. Yeah, no one does.
No, because I don't, I don't see, I, I just don't.
Oh, and by the way, CPC is a voting member, I think.
Which I should just list, so, yes, okay, so I think most of them are voting.
Is your CPC voting also?
Mine's a CPC also.
Oh.
You're, yeah, but his is not a voting member.
No, I vote.
You do?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, I've, I've been voting, I think it's a voting member.
I hope so. It doesn't say it.
You know, I, this is, I don't always listen. It's listed in the, this is just the sheet[1516.81] I use, so...
But doesn't matter.
Can we, can we maybe, um...
I'll confirm which are voting members.
Confirm which ones are voting members.
Yeah, let me do that, just, let me do a little refresh run, who votes and who doesn't.
That'd be good.
So I'll, when I set it out, I'll make sure I include that.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, it may just be a liaison, but we all do the evaluation sheet, even the liaisons do that, that's how it works.
So, for, which one, sorry, Craig, for which one?
Capital Planning, we all do these evaluative sheets.
That is a voter, I think you are a voting member on that one.
You are a voting member for that.
I'm, I'm almost positive.
You've counted as part of the quorum.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the Energy Committee, I'm going to keep that, I like that. I know it's, even I'm shocked saying that, but I, I, I love that committee. MBTA's going away, or it's already gone?
It's gone, I mean, our job was to refer it, so in, in November, we'll vote it, so...
Okay, so you're gone.
If there's another meeting this year, just, we won't replace me, and I'll just go to the remainder of the meetings.
Their, their whole board was appointed until completion, like, you see, it's supposed to have a...
So officially, it would be at the fall town meeting, but it should dissolve then, either we pass it, and we've done our job, or it doesn't pass, and then we have to start over again, and one of you can be appointed.
I was going to say, and they'll start from scratch, but...
Okay, I'm going to take the Permanent Building Committee. So Erin and I are going to swap, she's taking Cemetery, I'm taking Permanent Building.
Yep.
Fair enough.
I would like to attend some of those Permanent Building Committee.
You sure can.
Yeah.
So yes, if you're going to attend, we'll just post a meeting.
I'm going to stay with the Charles River, though it doesn't, and then School Committee, if I go, I go.
Oh, and Cable TV Advisory, there will be work this year, correct? Don't the contracts come up?
Yes, yes, so we will be...
So that, that will start to have a little more work to it.
Whoever's on that will, will have meetings over the next year.
We're actually missing one on here, that I'd like to keep, if I can, the emergency planning.
Why don't I take School and you take the other ones?
Local emergency planning.
Oh, I forgot you were on that, I, you know what, I, I didn't put one up.
Yeah, I'll take School.
Yes.
I'll take School.
So that's a, the LEPC.
All right.
So you want to keep the LEPC, Erin?
Yeah, if that's okay.
All right, Craig's going to take School, and I'm going to take...
Cable TV, because they will probably be meeting during the day.
They're going to, yeah, yeah, that would be day, and there would be...
There's lots of legalese in that, Ellen, you will like that, lots of legalese.
This will be a license agreement negotiation.
All right, good, so...
So, okay, so Ellen for Cable, Charles River, Ellen's keeping. School Committee isn't official liaison, but it's kind of like...
No, it's not, it is Charles River, so...
Craig will be the point person, right?
One, two, three, four, one, two.
You want me to read them back what I have, make sure you guys are in agreement?
Go.
Three, four.
Capital Planning, Craig, Cemetery Committee, Erin, Community Preservation Committee, Erin, Economic Development, Craig, Energy, Ellen, Skip MBTA, PBC, Ellen, Norfolk County Advisory, Craig, Cable TV, Ellen, Charles River, Ellen, School Committee, Craig. And then we, I forgot to include...
Erin, you don't have enough.
Well, she's also local emergency planning committee.
Yeah, and two of mine go away, so when you're counting mine there.
Really, local whatever?
Local emergency planning committee.
L E P C.
The LEPC.
Not that that's funny, because it's not.
But there's been actual meetings.
She will know what to do when there's an emergency.
There's been actual meetings.
Local...
Local emergency planning.
Isn't that how you got involved in the hazard mitigation?
Yes.
You know, we just had the hazard mitigation presentation, that's under the LEPC.
I've been on it for years now.
Really, so Erin's on that?
Yep.
And what, and what was the other one that you spoke about?
No, just that one, it's a hazard, we did hazard mitigation as part of it, so...
And, and like, two of mine aren't going to count for very long.
How often does that meet, Erin?